All right, it's October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, seven thirty-one P M. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Town of Willington Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present, myself, Bob Shavid, Andy Marco, Joe Hall. And we're gonna see Michael Johansson for Doug Roberts. No applications for receipt tonight, the public hearing. I'm gonna make a motion to eliminate P Z dash twenty-four dash eight from public hearing tonight because we closed it at the last hearing. This is an error. That's second. They all in favor?
Mine are aye.
I should strike that. New business. One seventy-four Burma Road, consideration of Conservation Commission request for board of selectmen for acquisition of seven point two eight acres.
Hi, everyone, I'm Kathy Devers. I'm the chairperson for the Conservation Committee. And sent the commission, your commission, a letter from our Conservation Commission. Hope you had an opportunity to read it. If not, I'll just highlight a few things tonight. Along with some maps that maybe as you might can put up on the board. Conservation Commission is recommending that the town acquire seven point two eight acre parcel. It's forested with two small ponds. It's located at seventy-four Burma Road, which is also considered to be map thirty-one lot twelve. It's adjacent to Fenton Ruby Park. And if you have the maps that I sent, you can kind of see on this map highlighted in yellow how it's adjacent to the park. It's bounded by two unmaintained roads. And it's also bordered by the Ashford border. So it's kind of the small piece that's the rest of the puzzle for the park. And there's several reasons that the Conservation Commission would like to see this added on. It would make additional wildlife habitat for the park. It's also in the Fenton River watershed, which is our public drinking water watershed. And also the fact that there's two unmaintained roads there. If someone was to privately purchase this, they could potentially put some pressure on the town to use those roads to access the property. So there are bright reasons that we think it would be, we're recommending it as an acquisition. There are some other things about it that we feel are important for you to know because it aligns with the P O C D goals. It would preserve and protect water sources and mountains. It would preserve at least twenty percent of land in the town. So we are, we're about twelve percent of the town is now protected open space and we have a P O C D goal of twenty percent. It would also protect land with a significant wildlife value and land that's contiguous with Fenton Ruby Park, which are goals in our P O C D. And also, it appears to be encourages town ownership of open space in order to provide the greatest control and benefit to the public so that we can control public access versus if there was a conservation easement on a private piece of property, it may not be open to the public. So one of the reasons we're here tonight is that according to state statutes, section eight dash twenty-four, Planning and Zoning Commission is required to weigh in on this proposed acquisition. There are some issues that we have been working on with Mike and Troy from Public Works and also Carl Asamovic, who's one of these professional engineers. You're all familiar with Carl. One of the issues is that there's a small building on the property. It was used probably as an old camp. It's in very poor condition. And once the property would be acquired by the town, we'd need to demolish it and remove it. There's also a small well that should be filled with gravel and caps so that nobody could, you know, fall into the well. And the two ponds appear to be me, I haven't even created. I'm saying that you would agree with that?
Yes, I would.
And they have dams on them and a dike. And there's trees and other vegetation growing on them. So those dams are not really in good condition. And we asked Carl, who did a great assessment, June of last year, the report was sent to you to give us some recommendations about how we might handle those issues should the town acquire the property. So if you have any questions tonight, we've got our team here to discuss.
Yeah, I have a question. What's the purchase price for the piece of property?
It's twenty-seven five for the property. And we'll be going to the Board of Finance on Thursday night to ask them to recommend, to the board of selectmen, that they move it to a town meeting to use open space funds for the purchase. We've also budgeted in that besides the land purchase, seven, seven thousand five hundred for remediation. And Troy can talk to you a little bit more about how we propose to take the camp out of there. And also about seven thousand, we're putting in that budget for any kind of legal fees for title assessment, purchase and sales agreement, closing, those types of things.
So it's forty-five with the other seventy-five hundred or?
So the total we're gonna ask the town to consider is forty-two thousand dollars from the open space budget. And there's approximately a hundred thousand dollars in that open space fund right now. So it's not something that the town's gonna have to be too concerned about in terms of where to find the money because that's what the open space fund is for. But that's, I'm not sure that's really a major concern that planning and zoning should have is the cost. It's really about whether or not the acquisition is in compliance with our P O C D and whether any other factors might be of concern, whether the access or other issues.
What is your estimate, Troy, for a row of getting rid of the camp?
Well, I did, it was around, I wanna say around five thousand dollars to get rid of that. And then it could be cheaper, too. I mean, there was a couple of different options. We, you know, one was to go the other way around. But this one would have to go through Burma Park, like the whole way. And there was talk of renting like a track machine that dumps to go up through instead of putting gravel and everything, you know?
Considering there's a cellar on that, why can't you, that, I mean, that's, thing's in pretty deplorable condition. Why can't that just be broken up and pushed into the cellar and then covered over with gravel?
As long as somebody approves of that, I mean, that's, I have no.
I mean, I think that would be a less expensive way to handle that.
As long as everyone's okay with burying that material there.
I mean, the hole's already there.
The hole's there, exactly. And, you know, I don't have an issue with that. Somebody says.
I see, I see the necessity of filling the well.
Yep, yep. We can fill that with piece alone, that's not a problem.
Right. But, so most of the cost would be getting equipment in and out of there and hauling.
To a dump area.
Yeah. So what the option is, just smash that down into the old cellar hall and cover it over.
Yeah?
Yep. Okay.
As long as somebody says that's fine to bury that stuff there, I don't have an issue with that. That's not wrong.
Yeah.
How deep are the ponds? Any idea?
On the average, I'd say they're probably about three to four feet deep. And the reason for that is because there's a lot of vegetation starting to come in. And when somebody gets the bottom, then it starts to work.
And I'm looking at the map, so maybe they're about, I think the, the, what is it? The lower pond might be two hundred feet long? Does that sound about right?
Yes.
Maybe. Thirty-five, forty feet wide. And the upper one is about eighty feet like down.
It's a little narrower because it's a little bit less in height.
Just dams, dams, the recent report about dams. And that's, now that's kind of a, that's, that's under a little bit of a microscope. There's, I think there's what, four or five dams that have been mentioned in town that are, that FEMA has indicated are a hazard or something like that. So dams might be on the radar, but I, with that, with that shallowness and size, you're talking not even an acre foot of water, even if it's a dam broke. What happened?
I don't get anything happen.
Yeah, I think I mentioned that in the.
Yeah, yeah, I was reading your.
Yeah, that it's, it's not gonna, it wouldn't do anything to anybody. And you've got a couple of roads there that don't, you know, that I travel upon. But that reminds me one thing, I just want to quickly mention that Kathy had touched on this. That in the nineteen nineties, there was indeed a proposal to build a house there. And at that time, we surveyed Burma Road all the way down to where the house would be for reconstruction of the road. So the town would be liable if someone did wanna build there, could build the road all the way down to that point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Also, why does, is this the well working? Is it, does it water?
I think there was a lot, I always wanted to see if it's in ten feet deep.
Is it stone or is it tile or is it?
There was a tile on top of it. And then I think there was a tile going down. We looked, we just slid it over a little bit.
I wonder why, why do we have to fill it in? Why?
Yeah.
No, I know, but isn't there, can't you secure it somehow? I mean, it just seems a shame to cover back the well.
The cement to cover down, I mean, we could do something. I mean, even by putting even a band or something over it or what, you know, putting a piece of rebar through it or something and then putting.
Yeah, just, it seems a shame.
There's ways to do something.
If there's an active, working spring fed well, it seems a shame just to fill it in.
I agree.
Fresh water is something that is rather a dear commodity. And having it available with a possible hand pump or something in the future could be a valuable asset to the town. I would sort of want that to be looked at possibly. But I like the idea, I mean, can a fire department burn a house down anymore for training? Probably not, but we thought I did.
Well, a couple of years ago, they gave, I know the vet clinic is, they burned that.
Yeah, I mean, they need training. They need volunteers. They can't get a truck in there.
Yeah, that, that'd be the only time. Well, I mean, if you did something in the wearing time, it goes somewhere down.
They're, they're, you know, that, that can't get in there. That's what it's for. There's really no access at this point. They're, I mean, well, I guess if you're gonna go in, you're cutting it anyway.
Yeah. If you're coming in from Ashford though, which wouldn't be the logical way to come in. There is a berm that would have to be removed in order to get down there.
We, we've looked at trying to get in through Moose State. And originally, we thought that we were gonna be able to, to do that because we thought that the town of Ashford still had rights to it. But it appears that they discontinued it legally in the late twenties. But people continued to use it. And whether it were people that owned properly along Moose State were just cutting trees or whatever as they fell across the road. But it's no longer maintained at all. And there are some trees there. So, so we went to plan B and we looked at how can we get a Burma Road if we absolutely need to. And, you know, as Troy mentioned, we can rent a tractor vehicle that could go up there. The excavator could get up there, which was a matter of not being able to get the dump trucks up there.
Right.
What size excavator do you have?
Sixty, a John Deere sixty.
Okay. Six, six feet wide, seven feet wide?
Yeah, it's probably, yeah, probably six and a half feet wide, yeah.
Little smaller than a vehicle, huh?
Right, yeah.
A little narrower than a pickup truck or something.
Yeah.
So quack to get up there and the things, but not a, not a full size.
I mean, you, I mean, you could probably get a full size vehicle up there. But I mean, you're gonna need oil drive and there's some, there's some big runs in there.
Yeah, yes.
The waters run down pretty agony.
It was in better shape in the nineties because I remember being a travel.
Yeah, and people probably rode on it, too.
That's the other thing, too, is if we can secure this property, you know, we really can put some stones around, so just keep A T Vs out there from Ashford and so on.
Cutting out those A T V riders one more time. Like, can you zoom in on that a little bit to, you know?
Where?
I just, I don't know, where, I'm just confused where it is along Burma Road.
It's not, that's why.
About what?
So this is, it's not gonna show the label.
That's Moose Meadow.
So here you go. So this is the town park and you can see the current existing road, kind of where it terminates.
Right.
And then the right of way continues all the way through here, but this is, you know, well.
Oh, that's, so that's way within, so that bigger pond, that's the Pilgrim's Pond?
That's Taylor Pond in the park.
That's Taylor Pond, where's, this is.
That's the Pilgrim.
That's the, that's the Pilgrim over there.
Yeah. And they have a right of way through the park.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, and the road kind of just ends, right? There's like a big pile of dirt or something at the end of the dirt.
There's, there's some rocks.
Yeah, rocks, yeah. But you can kind of see it, right?
And people still use that part of Burma Road as footpath and walk right through to Ashford to come down. Oh, yeah. People, I've, I've seen people cross country skiing on it.
Oh, wow, it's like it's in here.
Yeah. Power goes all the way up to the Pilgrim's Pond.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I've never been that far. That's part of them.
You can drive to where Mike's got a little hand, basically, from Moose Meadow all the way in. It is drivable.
Okay.
Well, from where, wait a minute, that's the parcel there, somewhere around in that corner where there's rocks. Yeah, right in there.
But it looks like that's the way it starts, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. That's the driveway.
That's the drive, yeah.
Nice. Cool. And where is Fenton Ruby Park? You said it, it's adjacent to it, right?
Yeah.
I don't know the boundary of that park very well. Oh, where's that? Is that in my net? Did you ask in all these pages? I thought you had. No, they don't. Thanks a lot, I said, or no, maybe anyone's, sorry. It's already been green on the screen. I do have it, I didn't realize that. Okay, there it is. Nice. Petex, why does that name sound so? Further questions?
No, again, you know, with the small camp that's up there, we can save five thousand dollars out of the open space fund. Just brush that thing down into the cellar, tell them a little bit. Why not have five thousand dollars for another day for another piece of property?
They're bringing up the work finance.
Okay.
Pretty straight over my sound. He's a new positive part.
Well, as a little bit more. Because I'm on the Conservation Commission, I'm only abstaining from this phone.
Okay. We still have four people, so we do.
Yeah.
I think they even prepared a motion.
I think the suggestion, not that, similar to ones that have been used in Ashford.
Very confidence.
Just trying to make your life easier.
I appreciate it. For questions? I think a stay of motion.
Yeah, sure. I'll take a stand on motion.
I move pursuant to section eight dash twenty-four of the Connecticut general statutes, the Willington Planning and Zoning Commission recommends that the town acquire from Lower W Pettix the seven point two eight parcel of forested land, which contains two small ponds located on map thirty-one lot twelve to be conserved as open space and added to the towns adjacent Fenton Ruby Park. This parcel is a priority for open space acquisition and natural resource protection. The land is contiguous with three hundred and four acres of preserved, preserved open space in town and offers multiple resource values by expanding drinking water supply and watershed protection, forest preservation, climate resiliency, wildlife habitat, and opportunities for passive recreation for the public, providing no encumbrances are placed on the property and no deed restrictions limiting the following: forestry management practices, wildlife management practices, foreign invasive species management practices. This acquisition is in compliance with the town's Plan of Conservation Development, two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty-eight.
I'll second that. Any discussion? At all in favor? I'm aye. Oh.
Right here.
Brings us to the math unfinished business. E Z dash twenty-four dash eight, text amendment application in section three, section eleven, zero one, pertaining to changes to many requirements for home business. Is that the town willing to be seen? I'll leave it there, we're gonna.
You have something in the way, you know, to Mike just say that? Thank you. Didn't make a sound. The only thing that I can add is that I did speak to Councillor. The one thing that was a little bit gray, not sort of like, yeah, you definitely don't wanna do this. This is absolutely incorrect and, and, you know, need to remove. But he sort of recommended was the language that we have in there automatically terminating the approval upon transfer of the property. So if it's a special permit, we, we can do that as part of the public hearing process. So we can ask the applicant to acknowledge that, you know, they're terminating their rights to that upon transfer of the property. So one of the, so just, I guess for clarity, I'm on, what is page, page two, number five. Any approval issued for a home business pursuant to this section shall be issued to the occupant of the dwelling at the time such permit is requested or the specific business described. While the right to continue the operation of such accessory use is acknowledged, given that such approval has been granted to the occupant of the dwelling unit, any approval shall be terminated upon sale or transfer of the property. So that's what we have as proposed. What I'm suggesting is it basically say, given that such approval has been granted to the occupant of the dwelling unit, any changes to the statement of use shall require a new approval. It's a little bit different because we're sort of saying, where are we going to determine that you're changing what you're doing?
And this is Slater, that Councillor said that.
Right.
Okay.
I don't think it'll, I don't, I can't think that it will ever happen that someone's gonna sell a house with a home occupation to someone that intends to buy the house and conduct the exact same home occupation. And the only time I think the commission would really care is if it was nonconforming. Because if it wasn't, they could come in and get a permit. So there's no reason that they would want to buy that approval. But I think it just clarifies that changes to the, to the statement of use, regardless of the ownership change, need to come back. Other than that, you'll see this is the ninety-nine draft, there's no.
All the other things is okay, but.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't, I was on the phone with him and I went through a couple of questions, things that had come up, we didn't do it line by line. But nothing else really is different than what we're.
Well, that change still beats it in our preview.
Yeah, that's not enough to, that's not enough to spark another public hearing, I don't believe. All right, so what's next step? You made the final document.
It's up to you. I mean, the only, I can accept all the changes and just give you a final non-redline if you wanna look at that. There's other changes that you think are non, you know, are not substantial amendments. We can talk about those.
Kind of seemed like the last public hearings, there wasn't really much to, that we should go back and amend anything. It wasn't anything too far out of specialty, but.
I mean, you talked a lot about the vehicle stuff on the front page, right? The trailer, a piece of machinery or other part there which exceeds one thousand pounds and stuff. Yes, those are the, you know, the things that we kind of, I think I have no issue with that.
That'll be in trailer that you're gonna need to haul a front end loader. Gonna be more than a thousand pound trailer.
Oh, your trailer, so they're gonna be like a thousand pounds, something like that. It's getting to trailer in front of a lot more.
Yeah, a couple more, yeah.
Yeah, so we talked, talked about padding. This is the ninety-nine. We're on this here. Yeah, so one of the, so we added after the September third meeting, which exceeds one thousand pounds. So the idea being now, if you have a piece of equipment that does not exceed a thousand pounds, it doesn't fall under that category. If someone talked about someone having like an obsession with lawn mowers or something. Which, which happened. We've clarified whether, you know, when you can have a home business versus a special permit, you know, whether you can have two of this, one of that. And the consistency of terms, some of those other adjustments.
We did it to death, but.
I wanna make sure you guys are comfortable. I'm comfortable that this regulation is really just providing clarity to, you know, to not much that's been different. There, there will be folks that are currently in violation because they don't have a permit. They are under violation of the old regs, they're gonna be under violation of the new regs.
And we understand that.
And I think from my purposes, I wanna be able to take any of those potential enforcement actions with a regulation that like is much more clearly understood. So I can explain, it's hard now to be able to tell them what they need to get rid of to come into compliance because their standards don't really exist. We've gotta remove this truck or you've gotta get rid of this equipment or you can't have this barn. It's very hard to explain. So if you're comfortable with it, I can do sort of an accept all changes and give you a clean version that we can read through and then if you're good, can be adopted at the next meeting.
That sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Yeah, make that change that you suggested.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's just put it together how it's gonna read.
Definitely, right, yeah.
Give it a quick scan, make sure, you know, everything looks good. Hopefully, we'll be able to. I'm working on this for.
I'm working on this for quite some time. We we don't need to make any motions on that, do we?
No. It'll say, it'll stay on their unfinished business until the next meeting.
And we're gonna uh move the approval minutes to the next meeting.
Yeah, I I can't get him out of the prayer, I don't know what the deal is, saying that the network is down, so. On the table.
The correspondence.
The only thing I, it's not, the correspondence went out, but it won't come to you, that I guess I'll mention, although it could come under staff report is, um so. It probably over a year ago now, you guys had a presentation by. The uh key capture energy folks that are doing the battery storage energy project, so um. We are, we've done a butters notification to everybody within a thousand feet of that project and. The project developers will be coming to the October twenty eighth EDC meeting to basically just present the project. And answer any questions and kinda go over everything with folks. So they'll they'll be here, um I think we notified about sixty-five property owners. So that'll be a public meeting with EDC if you're interested, or just wanna kinda make people aware that we are having that for those of butters. We've had some questions, but I think people have heard about it, they're very fine, and so we wanna just basically connect. Everybody to the horse's mouth and the the developers are gonna have all their. I think relevant people there. The project has not changed really in any way, period, since they originally presented it to you, it's the same size, the same location. The same scope. So nothing is different than the presentation that you saw, but just so you're aware, that's happening on the twenty eighth.
People made aware that this is done through the Siding Council and not any part of the town.
Yeah, so in my letter.
There is some confusion, cause even when we had our open house, some people thought it was a private entity, but some people. Some clarification.
So I I I mean. We we kind of included an overall map of the project and as part of what we said is while this project falls under the exclusive jurisdiction of the Connecticut Siding Council, it will not go before. Any town boards for approval, the town has asked the developer to attend blah 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 to present an overview and be available for questions, so. We're trying to make that clear.
That's that's all we can do.
And when people have reached out, I told them every single item on this project, the whole docket is still online with the Siding Council, you can look at. Everything, there's hundreds and hundreds of pages, so we're providing that.
What would the main concern be anyway, fire?
For the connection to the power grid. Um and uh no, just like the cell towers, people worrying about, you know.
I I think the the other thing is that because they see it's a sixty-five acre parcel, they think it's this huge project and then. You know, you look and there's really like. An acre, the rest of it is gonna stay as it, some people have had concerns that. Are we gonna have these like high tension wires that are gonna go from the property to what's over there?
When was that first completed?
Oh, yeah. Yes, yeah, they've they've been going through the Siding Council process. Yeah.
It's at least three years ago.
That they, I think they started with pre-COVID. Um, cause they presented to you, they presented to Inland Wetlands, they met with the fire department. They've done all the same stuff with Stafford, they went through the Siding Council process. They have requirements under that, but. Um so we're just making people aware, like I said, anybody with that was in a thousand feet of the uh project. Parcel, it's got a letter from the Land Use Department saying this is happening. Um, okay. Other than that, uh I don't think we have any other specific. Specific correspondence that I'm aware of. Um are, just to touch base on the strategic plan. So we had the open house earlier in September, sort of the next phase is that the the consultant um analyzes what are called conceptual development programs. So uh. Basically, the 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 background and data associated with, if someone were to put in a whole, I think it. There's hotel, what was the one he sent?
It was the commercial park hotel and then like a health. Health services.
So this is like a more of a data. Driven analysis of these conceptual developments for what. What that impact would be if they were to be developed here. So not, here's a site plan that shows how pretty it can be, but sort of, you know, square footage, economic impact, you know, more of a. Nuts and bolts, financial kinda analysis, so he's. Uh submitted, but not really had a chance to discuss with the EDC, the the first one, there will be two more. And it's just so that the town, I think, as an overall can get a sense of. What? These products, how they actually impact with the grand list, and you were explaining that he, you know, he showed the math and. Millions of dollars of investment equate to pennies of tax revenue. You'd need hundreds of flat pennies to actually do anything with the budget. Those are projects are, the the businesses are really important, but they don't do much for the true bottom line. It's important in other ways, employees, all place making, of course.
But like Love's made a small.
Yeah, Love's pays several hundred thousand dollars a year.
You know, move the needle, like obviously FedEx moves the needle a whole lot. If we were to put in one of those distribution centers, that was, that was the. Selling point of that, you know, the tax revenue and everything, but you know, we we heard that the town thought of that, the uh. But you know, we we do need something or some substance here, we wanna stabilize taxes, and yet people talk, they want new schools, they want different things, well. Have to pay for that stuff.
Yeah, so it's trying to make sure that the town can be more informed as to. We allow these uses, and what does that actually look like? Dollar General, how much tax does that building really pay? Not much, I mean, the plus side to any of that development is you may get six or eight thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars if it's a big. Single family home from a residential. You know, single property, but when your your pure per pupil expenditure is double that. Doesn't matter, right, so you you know, if we have everything stoned for a single family, you know, every, we have a a net. Loss in net revenue, so there's.
Roads, you gotta, yes, educate kids, you gotta.
You know, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars a student cost. If you're lucky, maybe less, so. Uh and then if there's two kids in there, in that in that house, the taxes just don't. And I'm not advocating we should get rid of all single family homes, but. You know, every time a new house with kids gets built, that that's a net cost on the town in most cases. So so we're trying to to provide more than what a POCD would look at, because this is really an analysis of what is. You know, what what is the the net, how does this impact scale? So we can share those with you guys if you want them, if you're interested, they'll all be part of the plan when it's out there.
Alright, brings us to item I, public participation. Right, it's not on the agenda, anybody wanna participate? Oh, one here, one potential person, okay, I guess not. Alright, item J, staff report discussion. I don't have anything else.
I have one question, is there something going on with the American Eagle? Yeah, was it closed? Flies the road.
I have not heard anything about that.
It's lasted several days.
No.
Nothing on the internet or nothing on the Facebook.
But I don't wanna spread rumors.
I I've read some other stuff.
Yeah, I wanna spread rumors, I just, you know, just wondered, like, it hurt, anything, okay.
So they posted online that, they posted online two days ago that due to an electrical issue, they've been temporarily shut down by the town. Once power is restored, we'll need a fire inspection and then another food inspection, so something must have happened there, I don't know the details, but that's what it looks like.
I won't land use it on fine, I've heard about them.
Uh we, it it sounds like if it's a fire inspection, there may have been a problem with um either looks like fire and health. So it it may be somewhere in there, but but it wouldn't come through.
So it doesn't look like it's permanent or anything.
Doesn't seem like it, they they seem like they intend to.
Alright, brings us to item K, uh it is eight eleven P M, eating journey.